Welcome to the first Planning Board meeting of 2023 in the town of Kipsey. Please join me for the pledge first. Thanks, everyone, and Happy New Year. Just a quick note that the item number D3 for 18, what was it called? 18 Creek Road. The applicant asked to pull it off the agenda, so that will not be on tonight. So first up, we have some procedures, adoption of procedures for board member participation via video conferencing. Lisa, do you want to say anything about that before we?
Sure. With the changes to the open meeting law following Zoom, the New York State Legislature authorized the boards to adopt procedures. They have to be in writing for when a member of a board can participate in the meetings by video conference. It's only under extraordinary circumstances, and the Town Board authorized the planning and zoning boards to take this action. So this is just a set of written policies that tracks the state law that says when a member can participate by video conferencing if they're under extreme circumstances, which include illness, among other things. So it's good to have in the COVID times.
Sounds good. Any comments from board members on this?
I didn't bring mine with me because it wasn't on the agenda that I got. But there was an item in there about a quorum and why you had to be physically present to constitute a quorum. It really doesn't make any sense.
The way it works is there has to be a quorum of the board in person in order for the board to act. But a single member, if there is a quorum in person, then a single member that may be, you know, COVID positive, but still able to participate in the meeting, for example, could then participate by video conference.
What's the purpose of that?
The purpose would be to allow all board members to participate, even if they can't be there in person. But the feeling of the state legislature was that it would protect the open meetings law idea if a quorum of the board were present, so that the public would be able to see in person the board members in the same room.
Even though they're on video?
Only, you couldn't, you'd have to have a quorum in the room, and then you would be able to have one or two, however many members. In this case, you'd be able to have up to three members would be able to participate by video.
So if we came up against, if we only had a quorum of four, for example, and we needed a super majority so we could vote by video conference if they were ill? That's my thought on it. But they could also still participate and vote their mind.
Right, but as of, for whatever reason, the state legislature made it so that that can only happen if the board member is under extraordinary circumstances, is the phrase. And it's defined as illness and also caregiving responsibilities and a few other things. So the rest of the details, the nuances, are up to the state legislature. And these proposed policies just track that.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Any other board members have comments on that or concerns?
So what is the procedure? The member whose via Zoom would have to submit, I think, write in the fact that they would be out?
Kind of has to be submitted in writing, but is there a?
Can we just make sure we're talking into that microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. So what would be the procedure if, let's say, a member is out? If I happen to need to be out and there is a quorum in the room, how would I make that happen? Would I have to do an email? Can it be via phone?
Yeah, you can, as long as you let Carl know that you're the reason for your situation ahead of time for the meeting. Or someone know, you can email Rachel or give a call. There's not a requirement for the notification for the extraordinary circumstances to be in writing. So I suppose it could even be you could sign in and say, I'm sorry that I can't be there right now, but I tested positive for COVID an hour ago, and I'd like to participate in the meeting.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
Sounds good. All right.
Carl, before we move on, can you take role for the, and let everyone know who's in the meeting room, please?
Sure. Tonight, we have Peter Finelli, Ahmad.
Person.
Ahmad in person. Myself, Nicole, Rocco, and Steve. Joan is absent tonight, as well as alternate Bob. So we have a quorum of six members. Well, no further comment. I move we adopt the procedures drafted by council to permit board members to participate in meetings referencing from private locations under extraordinary circumstances.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, we have a few other adjournments tonight. For Aitucker Drive, I moved that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February 16, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item A2, 76 Ireland Drive Extension. I moved that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February 16, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And item A3, all space self-storage facility expansion. I moved that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February 16, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. At this time, I move that we allow public comment on other items on tonight's agenda. And please focus on the agenda items. And please leave your comments to no more than three minutes, and we will consider those items during the meeting, but will not respond to them directly necessarily. Called to question, all is in favor? Is she here or second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to zero to open for public comment on other agenda items. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to comment on agenda items?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Or on the call, okay?
Aye. This is Michelle. The first thing is, you know, this meeting right now is not on the main calendar page, so that people only see Town Board meetings. There are no other types of meetings posted on the calendar, which is where, I don't know, I think most people would probably look. So that, you know, can we put the planning department meetings on that main calendar page?
We can take a look into that. Thank you for letting us know.
You're welcome. Well, just looking at this, we're going to be speaking about or looking at Hudson Heritage. I don't mean to be a broken record, but the OET bulletin 65, which relates to the FCC guidelines, you know, being compliant with that. According to the OET bulletin 65, it will allow uncontrolled exposure for 30 minutes on the general public. And that is within the FCC guidelines, but it doesn't say anything longer for more than 30 minutes. So I would imagine that would, you know, one needs to put signage near that 40-foot antenna, you know, to let the public know that. Because beyond 30 minutes, it's not FCC approved as far as the reading I've done on the OET bulletin 65. So one, you know, you have to have signage there. I mean, it's in close proximity to where people are going to be walking, shopping, the poor cart boy or girl, you know, who's putting carts away is going to be, you know, for shoprite is going to be exposed. So that's not a good thing. And going along with that, what lot number is the 40-foot antenna on? For the Hudson Heritage plan?
I mean, we're not.
Does anybody who?
There's, the application, the application tonight is only just for lot line discussion.
Well, that's why I'm asking. Do you know, anybody know what lot the antenna falls on? I mean, or what's it, they scans on?
Offhand, I'd have to look back.
Michelle, the application, so this is an open comment where we suspended the rules for any items to discuss any items that are remaining on the agenda. The agenda item referencing Hudson Heritage is related to the Woods locate re-subdivision. It's unrelated specifically to the telecom. I know the application you're referencing. So do you have any comments about the subdivision? The consistency review?
I do. I do. I do. And it has to do with the, what kind of liability under the transportation corporation will there be? And is there a board of directors and assets for that transportation corp, you know, corporation? And, you know, that's important to determine. As far as the last meeting went on this, it sounded like the transportation corporation was in a dance or in conversation with the DEC and protects the town from issues related to, you know, ground, you know, the ground and the whatever contaminants are in the ground, according to the DEC in that area. And that, you know, the DEC would, you know, kind of be supportive in that respect. But didn't, you know, again, we, I don't know what the transportation corporation is going to cover if it doesn't have a board of directors or assets if something happens with the tower. And, you know, towers are subject to fire because of the, you know, sometimes the electrical issues arise and.
Thank you, Michelle. We have to keep moving if you just want to wrap up.
Yeah, you have about, you have about 20 more seconds.
Okay. So the new telecom ordinances, I'm asking the boards to consider a better method of establishing and proving public necessity by actually using the Wilson Pro Spectrum Analyzer, because that joins with GPS locations and therefore, you know, you'll know which carriers are emitting what, and the town can raise revenue based on, you know, the carrier's market share of the right of way in our town. So I thought that that would be pretty magical to be able to do that.
Thank you, Michelle. We have to, we have to move on.
I mean, you've brought that up before.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to comment on items on tonight's agenda? In the room or in? All right, seeing none, I move we resume the meeting. Oh, did you want to comment?
I'm holding here for the Malabar Realty, I'll do two bars application, but.
Oh, we're taking the comments now on anything?
On anything?
This is the. Oh, oh, no, that's something different. If you're, if you're a resident looking to make a comment, this is the time. Just state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Jim Greaves, I live at 215 over Rocker Road. I'm here to comment on the Malabar project. First, I want to state that it should be dismissed based on the judge's orders. And after it has been dismissed or drawing the dismissal, I would like to ask that before another application could be presented before the board.
Oh, I'm so. Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Test, check, check. Now you're on the thing. Sorry, I just had the board on.
Okay, my name is Jim Greaves, I live at 215 over Rocker Road. I'm here to talk about the Malabar project. The judge has ruled that the site plans are null and void and that he would have to start with the process all over again, according to my reading of them. And I'd like to ask that before, on any consideration on a new application is presented before the board, that those two unsafe structures be taken down. There was an order to remedy on the gas station because it was being undermined, or I should say, the service station and garage. And there was also an order of condemnation issued at 219 over Rocker Road by the Building Department back in 2015. And that was ignored as well. So at this time, there's two dangerous buildings there. And the old farmhouse is actually, the building materials are coming off, they're going into the public way, and that needs to be remedied before someone gets hurt. That's what I got, thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments, Jim. Anyone else in the? Come on down.
Hello, my name is Linda Mack, and I live at 206 over Rocker Road in the town of Kipsey. And like Jim said, since the judge said that this is null and void, the application, I assume and hope the planning board will go along with the correct zoning laws that you have been put in place to protect residents. No gas station within 500 feet of a residential area. And also, Malabar has proven time and time again, if ever he were to be a business owner, he is so negligent and delinquent in anything he should have done to provide a safe environment for us. Again, the most important thing is, I assume and hope you will abide by your correct zoning laws because of prior administration had allowed so many variances in special use permits. It was obvious it didn't belong there in the first place. But now that the town seems to have done the right thing, I assume you will abide by those laws. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments, Linda. Anyone else in the room or on the call wish to comment on tonight's items? Seeing none, I remove, I move we resume the meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Get that back organized here. The next, so next up on the agenda is is Hudson Valley Animal Rescue Sanctuary. Who's here representing that? Come on over.
Hi, Amy von Merdeery with Dan Stacosta for Hudson Valley Animal Rescue. This project is currently in front of the Town Board for a rezone to make the uses that are existing their legal uses and to add the use of a kennel to the proposed zoning district the property will fall in. That will allow Celeste Wiltie to continue operating legally and apply for grant money in the future for the not-for-profit. All of the existing buildings are to remain, and very few changes to the site, other than parking, striping, and lighting potentially, is proposed. And it's currently two parcels right now. They're going to be combined into one through this whole process.
Okay. Thanks. Go to Eric for the department's recommendation.
The recommendation at the, by the planning, for the planning board tonight is to declare its intent to be lead agency for review. The Town Board has consented in advance to that. It does need to be circulated. The board also is in receipt of the referral from the Town Board with regard to rezoning and the text amendments, and will need to consider them going forwards. For tonight, in addition to the lead agency, we're suggesting that the board do give some thought as to the proposed text definitions and text in the amendments in preparation for future action after its lead agency role is confirmed at a future time. And consider the plan, discuss any questions you may have on it. The application does seem to need quite a bit more information, but it's mostly, it's mostly just information about conditions, much of which appeared on a previous bill to the planning board, so it shouldn't be too difficult to complete it for next time.
All right, thanks, Eric. I see Andy's on the call, so I want to see if you have any concerns from engineering on this one, Andy?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, our comments are relatively minor. We, you know, with the combination of the two lots into a single lot, I believe the property is served by water services, two water services now, when that happens, we'll need a plan for how those services will be combined since the town code only permits a single service per lot. That would be something we'll have to work with the town water department on. There's also a comment here about locating the existing traffic system. We'll need just an approximate location for where that's going to be. And then we also have a comment, more of a clarification on the, how the animal waste is disposed. We're assuming that it goes into a dumpster, but just want to kind of make that clarification. The rest of the comments are fairly minor. That should be pretty easy to address.
All right, thanks, Andy.
The animal waste does go into a dumpster and is collected by Royal Cardig.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Versus, so that would minimize the odor then. Let's go around the board for comments on this one, start with Peter.
Just one comment. I counted roughly 20 single-family residential properties that surround this property. If for some reason in the future that the animal rescue does not work out, those 20 or so neighbors that are directly contiguous, not counting the neighbors up on the hill. If this is rezoned to business, they could wake up one morning with a car lot or McDonald's or a Price Chopper in their backyard. Those are all permitted uses. In other words, we can't say, no, you can't do it because you're surrounded, you're in the middle of a single-family residential neighborhood. Now, I have something in common with probably most of all those people, actually two things. One is, I love animals. And number two, I got a tax bill like a couple of days ago from the town. And this part of paying taxes is the quiet enjoyment of your property. Besides paying your mortgage, your heat, maintaining the property, paying the property taxes, encourages a certain amount of responsibility from the people that they put into elective office and people who are appointed to office. I think there is a way to do this without rezoning. I think the R20 could be amended to provide for this type of use because of the size of the property. Now, I looked at the zoning map in the town. There are really, in the R20 district, there are very few properties that are over five acres. This would be a seven-acre parcel if these two parcels are combined. My sense would make more sense to go to the Town Board and say, look, amend the R20 so that really, it would eliminate the possibility of any, or 99% of the other properties in R20 of fulfilling the size, the acreage requirement. Establish the acreage requirement is part of that amendment. And let the property remain R20, but with an amendment to the R20 district instead of rezoning this. Because rezoning this, the business is like killing a fly with a sledgehammer, as the saying goes. It's not really necessary. And I think it would save the applicant a lot of time and money if they were to take that approach. Rather than go, rather than hiring an engineer, well, no, with all respect, hiring consultants, because they're going to have to go to the planning board, the zoning board, they're going to have to go back to the Town Board. Save yourself a lot of time and trouble, make everybody happy. There's no question, I have several relatives who are veterinarians and own and operate animal hospital. They're swamped. I have a friend who's on the board of the SPCA. They're buried. So I mean, this is, we want to allow this to survive and to flourish. By the same token, we don't want to harm the other people who own the houses, and there are a considerable number who are contiguous to this property.
Yep.
So anyway, that's my, that's my thought.
Whole Barnes drive there, yeah.
And one other thing, this is a textbook. If you look in the dictionary under spot zoning, you're going to see this application. And why put yourself to all the needless trouble when it could be so easily avoided? By simply going to the Town Board and say, look, I think there's a way out of this. Let's just amend the R20 because of the size of the property. You immediately wipe out the possibility, 99% of the other properties in R20 of achieving that acreage and allowing that use as an animal shelter. Anyway, that's my thought.
All right, thanks, Peter. That's a good idea. Ben? I'm sorry. Hi, Ben. Ahmad? Substitute that.
You've got a good point and good suggestion, thank you. I have nothing.
All right, and Nicole?
Yeah, I think that there's a few things that we still want information on, like signage, lighting, landscaping, stuff like that. And screening was another thing that came up, especially if she's going to make this into a veterinarian situation. She's going to have more animals coming to that site. So screening of animals, make sure that neighbors don't have any noise complaints, that type of thing. And I fully agree with Peter that, you know, this zone change might not be in best interest for the other residents. And if we could do some type of modification, I think that'd be better.
It's the path of least resistance.
Absolutely. That's all, thank you.
All right, thanks, Nicole.
Okay, two quick points. First of all, I think what Peter said was quite insightful, and I do support that. Secondly, well, I guess the three points I have is that, to build on what Nicole said, seeing in the news recently that animals have escaped from mazoo's exit, et cetera, do we have, is there a plan there to contain the animals on another property? And then, thirdly, is that if we, since it seems like Peter's got the more elegant solution here, will that affect from a procedural point what we do here? Do we still go?
We're still. We're still.
Still need to do a lead agency.
Because we'll. Okay. Yeah, those are my comments. Because we're going to look at a site plan to adding parking, strapping, etc. Yeah, those are my comments. Thanks. Steve?
No further comments.
All right. The other members covered some of it. I mean, screening was one of my main concerns, if there's a noise or any light spillage that goes to, especially the houses right across the street there. As I was visiting the site, I didn't really hear any noises other than one rooster. So, but we have to, have to make sure that the residents are protected. So whether it's some additional, some plantings or whatever to cover that. So I guess we can move forward to this point. I recommend that Peter said.
One final comment, that really for the applicants benefit. Several years ago, we had an applicant had very deep pockets. I've been, I've been doing this for a long time, and occasionally, an application comes in that just doesn't look right for one reason or another. And I said to them, they were sitting where you're sitting right now, and I said to them, this is a very expensive process appearing before this board, the Town Board, the zoning board, and it's lengthy and time-consuming, and it's very expensive. My guess is that your applicant does not have those type of deep pockets. They didn't listen, and I don't know, 18 months or 24 months later, and after what must have been an incredible expenditure, what I suggested to them came true. And they went to the Town Board, and the Town Board gave them, they changed the, they amended the code for their benefit. So I'm just saying, for the benefit of your client, save yourself some money and invest it in the animals, which is what you want to do in the first place. Don't get yourself so committed that you find yourself, you know, self-defeating. We want to help you, we're here to help you. So whatever we can do, but it's up to them to decide.
Thanks, Peter. We're open to what the town suggests to get to the end of this gap, but.
I mean, we may want to make a recommendation to the Town Board to pursue that path. Well, let's do some homework first. But that's something we got to look into. The fact that you started looking at those properties, that's good. All right, at this point, we'll just go for lead agencies.
Okay. I move that the planning board declares its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an enlisted action and authorize planning department circulation of notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to all involved agencies.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move the planning board to defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed from the planning department as to adequacy and completeness included up but not limited to the following 1 through 10.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, you're set for now, and...
Thank you.
We'll encourage you to look into that issue with the Town Board.
Definitely.
Just want to change the order of one thing here, so we can jump to Hudson Heritage.
Good evening. I am Joe Ariel, I'm with Denell and, Denell and Denell, we are the attorneys on the project.
For which projec?
Excuse me?
For which project?
On heritage, Hudson Heritage.
Hudson Heritage, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I apologize for not having my lawyer uniform on until --
Just want to make sure. You threw us off, Joe.
I think there's, initially, there was one thing on the agenda for tonight, and I think maybe there's two. I don't know whether you'd like to...
Yeah, we received, we did receive the request for the time extension, and we have simply added it as an additional request of resolution for this item.
Great. And with respect to the item that was originally on the agenda, which was a further recommendation, as you see fit, with respect to the potential for an open development area on another lot, we had initially asked for that recommendation on Lot 5.
Five B.
Right now, now we are asking for it on 4A. I do want to mention that your zoning administrator determined that the lot, originally this was triggered by a comment that potentially what was being created was a flag lot on 4A.
Yes.
There's been a determination by your zoning administrator that it's not a flag lot, and that might obviate the problem, and I'd like an opportunity to discuss it further with your counsel. There is potentially a discussion to be had about the fact that the open development area has different requirements under state town law, the flag lot issued is a local law. Anyway, the point is, if we don't need it after that discussion, we will not include it in our petition to the Town Board. If we do, it would certainly expedite and help move the project along for the Town Board and for us if we had this recommendation in hand. So I just wanted to illuminate you a little bit on the progress we've made on the issue, but we thank you very much for making the recommendation, should it be necessary.
Okay. Thanks for your input. We'll start with Eric.
Basically, the, I think it's pretty straightforward. We did receive the flag lot comment from the zoning administrator. The applicant requested a proactive referral recommendation back to the Town Board, but I think I'll, previously the planning board did render a referral recommendation on the other lot. You can do so here, but I'm going to first invite comment from Town Counsel.
Great. And just for the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm is Aaron Steinmetz, your special counsel on this matter. Good to see everybody in person, it's been a while. So the question, ultimately, this subdivision request is going to need a amended development master plan approval from the Town Board because of the new layout of the lots. The HRDD regulations allow the Town Board to set the frontage requirements for each lot, and so that's sort of where we're in this kind of question of, well, is it a flag lot? And there's no actual definition just for this, for this application. I don't want to go too deep into the weeds, because part of this, and I think Joe and I agree, it's a bit academic, because once the Town Board, if it does, but we assume they will, approves the lot line adjustments, and they will be adopting an open development area, or there's an application pending, or will be, to designate an open development area for Lot 4, because that is going to be required.
Five B.
Five B, excuse me. I think ultimately, this question of whether or not the frontage that's going to be proposed for 4 will be allowed, it's going to be worked out before it gets back, before your board for subdivision and amended site plan approval. The board, I think, took no position on the original recommendation, so the only thing I would say is, I would be consistent in your recommendations to the Town Board, so whether you don't want to take a position on this proposal, then I wouldn't take a position. Or if you want to change your position in the first instance and marry that to whatever your position's going to be on this one, I would also provide it as consistency, just so that the record is clear and the Town Board doesn't kind of scratch his head and say, wait, you know, where they stand.
I mean, yeah, it was kind of the purview of the Town Board, we felt, for 5B, and that's, they make the final decision on it. Thanks, David. Go around the board for comments on it. Peter again?
The only concern I had was with regard to the flag lot, but apparently it's been resolved, so.
Yep. And Ahmad?
No comments.
Nicole?
No comment.
Rocko?
No comment.
Steve?
No comment.
Yep, that's, I'm the same thing, I think we should be consistent, as counsel has recommended to us.
Okay. I move the planning board advise the Town Board that it has no opinion on the creation of an open development area for Lot 4A as proposed by the final plat, Hudson Heritage Major Subdivision, Section 1.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, and we have another motion here for, there for a time extension.
Just to clarify for the public record, the time extension request before the board relates not to the application you were just discussing.
Correct.
But to a separate application on this same project relating to a prior decision of the board from last August, having to do with a conditioned approval of a subdivision. The time limit for that subdivision is approaching, and the applicant requested an extension of that approval.
Okay, thanks, Eric. To make sure we, to that, I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions of conditional finer, final major subdivision approval from February 14, 2023, forward to August 13, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded for time extension, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks very much. We'll see you soon, and everybody drive safely.
Thank you.
Take care. This was adjourned. We'll do one more time extension, we have Stratford Times, Stratford Farms Town House. I move that the planning board grant two 90-day time extensions of site approval and a final major subdivision approval from January 7, 2023, forward to January, July 6, 2023.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, last item now will be Arlington Farms Malabar Realty. I understand if somebody...
Is that completely off?
Yes. Yeah, they asked to be removed.
Hi, thank you, Board, for hearing us tonight. My name is Mary Kate Eframe from Stenger Diamond and Glass. I'm here for the applicant, Malabar Realty. I wanted to thank the board for keeping us on the agenda while our Article 78 was pending. I believe you know from your own counsel, Lisa Cobb, that the court did make a decision in that case. The normal rule is that the law applicable at the time of the board's decision controls the application. Our lawsuit was based on whether or not we qualified for an exception to that rule based on special facts that would support the application being determined according to law at the time that it was filed. The court denied us the special facts exception. However, the court did not rule on any of the other claims that we brought in that proceeding, finding them to be premature. The court did not want to issue an advisory opinion. I do disagree with the neighbors' interpretation of the decision that the court ruled that our application was null and void. So we are here now in kind of a peculiar procedural posture. The vehicle floating overlay district that was adopted by the Town Board provides that parcels will be mapped under the same procedure by which a zoning amendment would be adopted. That procedure, that Article 14 of the zoning code, permits the planning board to recommend to the Town Board whether or not the amendment should be adopted, or here, the partials should be mapped. Because of the history of this application, and the similar one that came before it, and the negative declaration made by this board in connection with the earlier application, we believe it would be appropriate to continue these proceedings to develop a record by which the planning board could recommend to the Town Board whether our parcel should be mapped. And so we request the board to not deny our application, but to allow us to go forward, respond to the board's comments that we received, I think in September of 2020, which were delayed by the moratorium and then the commencement of our Article 78 proceeding. We are, like I said, in a new procedural area. We will be the first application to be decided under the new vehicle fueling overlay district law, and we would be happy to submit further briefing to the board on why the suggestion is appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just instruct the board, so again, for the record, David Cooper, partner with the law firm is Aaron Steinmetz, also your special counsel on this matter.
Yes.
As counsel led off with, this matter is pending litigation, or at least that's what the applicant has conceded. The application before the board is an application that was submitted in 2020 for a motor vehicle fueling facility.
Yes.
The court did issue a decision that this board needs to review that application under the existing laws as it exists today. That's correct. So the minor question, the limited question before the board is whether or not the application that was submitted in 2020 can move forward. And in this case, since the current zoning does not permit the intended use of the site, staff has recommended, and I agree with that recommendation, that the board deny the application. The applicant has submitted a letter, a request for commenting on a vehicle floating zone petition. There is no vehicle floating zone petition before the Town Board, before the town at all. So I, it'd be my opinion that would be inappropriate for this board to make a recommendation or opine on something that's not pending before the town. So I would suggest that the board focus on that limited question that's back before the board with respect to whether or not, under the existing zoning, the proposed use is permitted at the site.
And just to respond to that, we are in, we are going to be the first application, and I don't think it's required under Article 14 that we apply first to the Town Board, then come back here for a recommendation, and then go back to the Town Board. We are already here, before a board that is familiar with our project, so we would like to continue here and request that if the board, having reviewed the record we hope to develop, determines that the project should be recommended to the Town Board under Article 14, at that time, the recommendation can be made, and Town Board can take up its considerations under Article 14 of the zoning code. I do not agree with Mr. Cooper that we have to abandon these proceedings, go to the Town Board, come back here, this game of ping pong, we have been here since 2015. The neighbors have expressed an interest in the property, having some kind of remediation performed on it. I think it would be in everyone's interest if we kept the process moving here.
This is not the proper venue to go back and forth on that. If the board has any further questions, I would suggest that we adjourn to a divisive counsel session. Otherwise, I would ask, I would suggest that the board...
I think...
...board on what's in front of us.
I mean, we just recently, we just, just before the meeting, we got a letter from Ken Stenger as well concerning this. So I, so I move that we do go into executive session because it'll, pending litigation to clarify to all board members what's happening with this.
Okay, so the, we can either go to executive session or divisive counsel session to, I can answer any questions you've got about that letter, that's fine. You just need to make, if you're going to go into executive session, you just need to make a motion and...
Yep, I just moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Planning board's going to enter executive session, so I'm just going to go ahead and mute the room.
Yeah, we'll mute the mics and we'll be back in a few minutes.